This is a recording of the Southwood Public Library Board of Trustees. It is April ninth at seven P M. Agenda? Oh, the minutes? Yeah, I've got everything here. Um. Okay, we are recording.
Okay, um. Does it have everyone?
Yeah, let's do a roll call. So, um, Lynn Blair is here.
Right from the frame.
Emmy Science Salem.
Cindy Warner.
Tracy Meswer.
Okay. Public comments. I don't see any public, uh, any members of the Republican person on this. There's anyone on the line?
Nope, just us.
Okay, we're out of communications?
Okay, um, so we've had a busy couple of months with events and whatnot. Um, two notable ones were, um, the two we worked on with the Agriculture Commission. So we had the, did you come to the grant writing workshop, Amy? Um, it was very successful. We had a large crowd for the grant writing workshop one evening for farmers. Um, and then they also did a succession planning workshop, which we helped them with here. So those were both very successful. Um, we hope to do more of those in the future, collaborating with different boards of organizations in town. Um, we have submitted to grants, which we do every year. We submitted the Shirtlift Children's Services, Inc. Grant. Um, and the teen department put in, what was that? Oh, um, the teen department put in a grant, um, having to do with the creation station, some updates on that and some updates on things for the teens department. And then I worked on the Sarah Gillette Services for the Elderly Grant, um, to kind of just have like a stationary cart, like the children's room has a nice cart for crafts that's just kind of there and people can come in and do it. So I kind of put together one for the adult section that we could just kind of leave out by one of the tables in the back. Or games, craft stuff, coloring supplies, um, anything that people can just kind of drop in and do whenever they want to. So hopefully we'll hear back from both of those. Usually, we usually hear in like the springtime, early summer, I think. So I will let you know when we hear back. Um, April events have been really well attended so far. Last week we had Dr. Andrew Lamb talk about, um, kind of a developments of medicine in World War Two. Um, we've got a lot of registrations for our program this month. And then we're having, um, Christopher Daley come talk about, um, the Lincoln assassination. Unfortunately, we couldn't do it on the anniversary because it was Patriots Day. So it's the day after April sixteenth. He's coming to talk about the Lincoln assassination. And then we're having an author from Huntington who wrote a book, um, yeah, about a man that was kind of mysteriously murdered, true story in Huntington. Um, so he's coming at the end of this month to, um, talk about his book. And then in between all that, we've got our book sale. The Friends are organizing details and dates, drop off days, and the actual sale dates are all on our website. Um, and then other than that, we are working and planning towards summer reading. I think we'll do the same thing last year. It worked really well and just kind of pause the recurring programs for the six weeks of summer reading, just so we can focus on summer reading itself, um, because we've got a lot of events. We're also working with a new, um, software. We're not using Beanstack anymore. We're using Read Squared. We did enjoy using, um, Beanstack, but it was funded partially, well, it was actually fully funded by the Board of Library Commissioners. And they aren't funding it anymore. And the price for us to have it is just too much. Um, so we're going with something called Read Squared, and it seems to kind of work in the same way. So I think we'll be fine. It's just gonna kind of be a little bit of a learning curve this summer. It's, I think it's like reduce, reuse, recycle, something, something along those lines. Yeah, yeah. Um, so yeah, I've got a bunch of adult programs scheduled. We have, um, sourdough Brandon coming to talk about how to do sourdough bread and all that fun stuff. We've got a couple craft programs. Um, so yeah, we've got some, some good things on, on the calendar. And that is it for my report.
Moving on to minutes.
So I sent Tracy and Cindy the minutes. And then I did not send you guys the February minutes because there were no minutes. There was no meeting. All it basically says is the date and no meeting. And the meeting canceled because of quorum. But I'll need to post that in our minutes as well, just so people can see that it was canceled. Did you want to make a motion for the January and the February meeting canceled?
Tammy makes a motion for the acceptance of the January minutes and the February minute statement that the quorum to the meeting was canceled. Aye, Tracy, second.
Always in favor, Michael, yes.
Emmy, yes.
Cindy, yes.
Tracy, yes.
Okay. So I, since we didn't have a couple meetings in a row, I just got, and, um, Tracy and Cindy, I can just leave copies of these in your mailbox and you can read them if you're interested. Our, um, I've got December. I have got January statistics. I think we're, we and I are in March, too. Um, nothing particularly notable about, I mean, everything is pretty much, you know, kind of pretty much the same, pretty much what you would expect. Um, I think we've, you know, we've seen, um, yeah, some more, yeah, you know, the new cards are pretty much the same, you know, door count as like in February, it's gone up a little bit. Um, looks pretty standard for the past couple months. We just have thirty-three new cards in March, um, compared to twenty-five of March of last year. So that's pretty good. Um, yeah, yeah. Any questions or, no, okay. Um, and then I don't have anything on the old business. So if we're good, we'll continue on to new business. Um, this one was kind of a spillover from, from when we didn't meet before. The Historical Society wanted to leave their laptop here, um, that had the canal program on it. Um, but I-
That was not on the list.
Yes, yep, yep. So we got that all set up. I did, um, just kind of write up a document so the Historical Society, so that we have kind of an understanding that, you know, we can't keep our eyes on it all the time, you know, there's, there's always a risk, even if it's for in-house use, there's kind of always a risk of something growing legs and disappearing or, you know, God forbid if somebody drops it or, you know, a million and one things could happen, but just so that they, they understand. Because I think this was a very, um, this gentleman had worked on this, this program for like twenty or thirty years, I think. So it's a really nice program. Um, and I think he's donating it to a couple other libraries in the general area. Um, but I just wanted to write something up so that you know, we, they understand that, you know, when things are made available to the public, sometimes accidents happen, you know, but I think it's gone really well. It was advertised in the paper. Um, we've had people I've seen coming in to use it. So seems to be a really good resource. Um, and then the gallery manager volunteer position, um, Cindy had stepped up to help out, which was great. Um, but it turns out just after that, we fortunately were able to find somebody to do it. Um, so we have Brianna doing it. She's a local patron. She used to intern here when she was in high school. So she's very familiar with the library. Um, we've already got somebody up for April. And then for May, um, for May, she has one of the schools around here, one of these, they're doing like an art class and they're gonna have their artwork up here. Um, they're gonna do a reception. So it's gonna be a, a really nice thing. She's, she's very excited about it. Um, so seems to be going good.
Very good.
Um, the CPC application for outdoor space, um, that was approved by the CPC in February. So it's, um, they wrote up a warrant or what do they call it? An article for the town meeting warrant. Um, so that will be on the town meeting. I do just have one concern that I need to check in with maintenance about because, um, the project was kind of conditional. Uh, David Sutton, who's head of maintenance, is now on leave. So-
Oh, he is?
He is on leave, yeah. So I need to check in with maintenance to kind of see what's going on with it because the project for the, the space, he was gonna kind of prepare it himself. And he said, you know, I have all the supplies. I have everything. I can do all the work myself. So I need to kind of figure out where that is left off.
Well, at least that's a couple of months off.
It is, it is.
Town meeting in the middle of-
It is.
Like the third week of May or something.
Yeah, yeah. So I just need to figure out, you know, if it's still doable within the kind of timeframe we're looking at, you know, what's, what's going on. So I'm gonna-
I just saw him Saturday.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't, I don't know when his, when he, he's gonna be back or, so I just need to kind of check in and confirm, just to make sure, you know, that everything is doable. Um, or, you know, what else I can help with. Um, so yep, it's gonna be on the May, um, the May town meeting, uh, warrant to vote upon. So that's good. Um, I did send everybody, I sent the people on Zoom a copy, just of the draft, um, annual survey. So, I mean, yeah, I tried to keep it, I know, I tried to keep, yeah, no, 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 you know, if, if you, any additional pages, I think you lose more people in filling it out. So we wanted to keep it, um, very simple, kind of very targeted to the questions. I mean, a lot of the questions that we've done before that like we did with our strategic plan, we kind of already know the answers to. So these were kind of, you know, just to kind of, we asked a little bit more specific questions, like what parts of the collection would you want to see expanded, you know? When would you be most likely to attend a program, you know, morning, evenings, weekends? So just kind of targeted questions to just give us a little bit more information.
And you're doing that entire month?
Uh, I think I put down here April fifteenth to May fifteenth. Um, that's gonna kind of be tentative, um, with the book sale and everything coming up. I, I will run it for a month, but- Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, yep. Yeah, I mean, I'm not, and I'm not entirely like a hundred percent positive that we'll get it out on the fifteenth. I will have it run for a month. Um, and my goal will be to get it out either next week. And if that doesn't happen, then probably the week after. But either way, it'll, it'll run for a month. We'll have copies here. Um, I will do digital copies. That's where we get really most of our responses from is, you know, Facebook, email, website, that type of thing. And maybe, I mean, if I do get it out, oh, yeah, we'll get it out in time for the book sale probably. I mean, maybe I can, people will be too busy shopping, but maybe somebody will pick up a survey. So, yeah, that's, that's kind of what it is. Try to keep it short and simple. I think if you do much longer, you tend to lose people. So any questions or comments or suggestions? Okay, um, our budget meeting with the finance committee was a couple of weekends ago. I think it went well. I don't know if Michael has any comments about it. Um, and then we'll just prepare for the town meeting, which will be, I can't remember the day off the top of my head, um, in May. Um, twenty twenty-four holiday closings. I figure this is gonna kind of be an odd year because, um, Christmas falls in the middle of the week. So obviously, you know, we have our standard Patriots Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day. Those are all pretty standard, as well as Thanksgiving, Thursday and Friday of that week. Um, Christmas falls on, and I am already getting questions from, you know, staff who want to make plans. Um, so I wanted to just kind of maybe figure out what we're doing now so that we know, you know, our staff knows for their own planning purposes. So Christmas itself falls on a Wednesday. Yeah, I know, that's terrible. Nobody's excited about that. So, I mean, my question is, um, and I can always, what I can always do is put it up to the staff and see what they want to do. Usually what we do is we get the half day of Christmas Eve and then New Year's Eve, starting at noon. Usually what we do is the staff wants to smash those into one. Um, so we could do that and either be closed Christmas Eve or December twenty-sixth, the day after Christmas. Um, definitely will be closed the twenty-fifth and January first. If they combine it into one day, that means we would be open the thirty-first. And on Tuesday, that's a Tuesday. Tuesdays were open till eight. It doesn't make sense to me to be open until eight P M. on New Year's Eve. And nobody will be here. So, I mean, what we could potentially do is I could poll the staff and ask them, would you rather have December twenty-fourth off? Would you rather have December twenty-sixth off? Um, would you rather do a half day on the twenty-fourth or thirty-first? You know, I mean,
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, and then it's, you know, and then that way I'll have an idea. Um, and we can go from there.
Because I, I think it's, it's gonna be open on that Thursday first. Put down by five o'clock and we'll be normally after that.
Yeah, and then what I can do is I can, those staff who normally work in the evening, we can kind of, we can figure their schedules to be a little earlier or more spread out through the week. So I can poll the staff about what they want to do for the twenty-fourth and the twenty-sixth. Um, if it turns out that, you know, maybe we can go kind of like a skeleton crew on either day, because I really want to make sure that people have the day off that they get together, you know, with their family. So, I mean, I can kind of poll the staff, see what they say, and then we can kind of make the final call.
Are you traveling anywhere or will be here?
I mean, we don't, I don't have family, you know, we're not, we're not flying to Arizona again in December. So, yeah, I mean, I, but like, you know, my family gets together on Christmas Eve. So I'm like, if I work Christmas Eve, then I miss a family party, you know, so, but then some people get together the day after. So I can kind of poll them and that'll give us kind of a baseline. I can recheck in with you guys and-
And, and, and you say, let's say, goes on Christmas Eve. For some people that may be traveling or something going on the twenty-sixth, kind of role skeleton.
Yeah, well, I mean, and the, the danger about a skeleton crew is, it is a skeleton crew. So, you know, if, if somebody gets a bit sick or something, then, you know, I'd really like to have it kind of be one or the other, instead of, you know, having people be kind of bare bones both days. Because then it, you know, you, you lose one person and you're, you're in trouble. So. Yeah, so I know it's kind of on the early side, but like I said, people have been asking me. So I just, I want to help them figure out their holiday plans. Okay. Um, yeah. So our info materials line, um, we're working on spending that towards the fiscal year end. Um, I am looking into potentially some, um, new resources that we could use from that line. Um, so we already have Ancestry Library Edition, which we use from that. And I was kind of thinking about different ones that we could, um, get for the patrons to use. So I'm looking into, um, there's one that's called American Ancestors, and they have some, um, some good resources for genealogy and history research. And that's only about, the subscription's about two hundred and seventy dollars a year. And they have a lot of like classes and things like that. Um, so I'm gonna look into doing that for our info materials. I'm also looking into adding to our ancestry subscription. Um, we really don't have much for, um, newspapers. We get a couple databases through the state, but it's, you know, I'm, so I was looking into adding newspapers dot com, which you can add to your ancestry subscription. Um, you can get it like the world or you can get it just for the northeast. So I figure we'll start with the northeast. Or I'll see what the pricing looks like. If the pricing's not bad for the world subscription, I mean, you know, because we have people in here looking for like newspaper articles and, and things like that. So I was gonna look into that.
Wha- what's the ballpark price of that kind of?
That I don't know. That one I'm still waiting. I've, I've asked a couple times. I was hoping to get it in time for tonight, but I haven't gotten it yet. Um, and then so adding newspapers dot com and also Fold Three, which is, um, military history. You know, you can look up military records, things like that, which is also really helpful for people doing genealogy. So I was gonna look into seeing to add those two things to our ancestry subscription out of the info materials line and-
It used to be ten or fifteen years ago, we M D O C is paying like the Boston Globe, the Business West, uh, the Springfield Republican, et cetera, but I know within some tight years, most of that stuff disappeared.
Yeah, I think they still have the Boston Globe off the top of my head. Um, but yeah, they, there's not, there's not too much. So I was hoping to kind of add something. So we're look, I'm looking into doing that for the info materials line. I'm also looking into adding some new museum passes. We've got a couple that were recommended to. Yeah, yeah. So we're, yeah, we're looking into new museum passes. Um, some that patrons recommended and then others just trying new things. Like I think I'm, I think one of them is like the Mark Twain House, you know, stuff that's, that's on the closer side. Um, yes, and that one too. Um, and then somebody recommended, um, it's the new Salem. It's like the Museum of Art or something out there. So that one's a little bit off the beaten path, but it was recommended. So I figure we'll try it. We don't really have many museum passes like that, you know, so we'll see how it goes. I mean, worst comes to worst, we, we reevaluate them every year, take a few off, add some on. You know, some are gonna be like, the Springfield museums will always be a standby. So.
Mm-hmm.
Um, any questions or concerns with that plan? Okay. Um, oh, and the community room, um, the community room meeting, I just, this is just a copy of the community room policy. Tracy or Cindy, if you were interested, they're, they're on our website. So you can look them up. Um, I'm just giving you guys a copy of the existing policy as well as, um, wording I'll suggest for a change. So, um, there was, I know Michael mentioned to me a concern, um, a couple of weeks ago when we had a local reverend book one of the study spaces. So I kind of asked around to, and there's, there's no reason, um, you know, as far as our policies go, you just have to be a nonprofit to use a community room. Um, the study spaces don't even say that just because, you know, we want them open for like tutoring, which obviously is for profit, you know, but they're great for tutoring, things like that. So what I did was, um, I kind of asked other libraries. I asked, I spoke with one of the consultants at the Massachusetts Library System on what they recommended, you know, for, you know, because we want to be, make sure that people know that, you know, obviously the library, you know, where these groups book the space, you know, they're not necessarily affiliated with us. They're just using the space. So, um, this is kind of the wording that I put together from their suggestions. Um, they suggested to have something on our, um, policies that says that when, when groups book the room, like when we send posters to the high school for them to post, they have us put on there like this is not a, a school affiliated event, you know? Um, so I'll just read the wording off to you. Um, except as a designation of location, the name and contact information of the library may not be used in any publicity for a meeting. Uh, the following wording should be used on any advertisements or publicity. Quote, "The program meeting is not sponsored, cosponsored, or endorsed by the Southwood Public Library," end quote. "The library does not prepare or issue press releases, promotional materials, or otherwise promote in any way non-library-sponsored meetings and programs." "Please note that only library events will be posted on the library's online calendar. Groups are welcome to give their flyers for posting on the library's community bulletin board in accordance with posting policies." Basically, the main point of this is just having, if anybody's advertising, if it's a nonprofit that's booking our space, um, that they just put on any promotional materials that this program is essentially not sponsored by the library. Um, so that way people know, you know, that it's not a library-sponsored event.
That sounds good.
Yeah, yeah. So what I, what I would ask you to do is just to add the wording that I just read to you to both the study space policy and the community room.
Okay, well then.
Use of the community room.
Yeah, it sounded fun to me.
So let's take a vote on that. Uh, Michael, yes?
Emmy, yes.
Cindy, yes.
Tracy, yes.
Great. So I will add it to both of those policies. And then the last thing on here was a memo, oh, sorry. I don't know if you need another one.
Yeah.
Um, but I did not send it out over email. So I don't know if you want to talk about it briefly for Tracy and Cindy.
Kind of a reminder, of course, um, my little memo, I'm talking about the fact that it's important that if, if people can, that they attend the meetings either in person or will. Um, Maria Gallo resigned. She also resigned from some other things. She's been involved with the town. And we've got town elections coming up in May. And we've got the two normal trustee positions, there's always two every year for three-year term, as well as two years remaining on Maria's, um, term. So at the May elections, there'll be three openings, one for two years and two for three years. And just before the meeting started, we do have candidates for the three-year terms, and we have one candidate, I can't remember the name, for the two-year term. Also, um, it's important because Lynn puts time and effort into putting materials together for the meetings that we try to be here at the meeting to go over the, the material. And, um, we had the, uh, the meeting before the CPC Community Preservation Commission about using CPC funds for the library for outside. Lynn did a very nice presentation on that. And it was approved by the CPC Commission in minutes. Many times if you, if groups go before CPC, it can be multiple meetings.
Oh, really? I didn't know that. That makes me feel a little better.
It went very quick. And I had forgotten that one of the members of CPC is a school teacher. I don't know what he teaches in some other town in the area. And they said, oh, that's a such and such. Oh, that's pretty present. I'm like, oh, what are you talking about? Which, which is good. But again, the CPC usually sails through, uh, the May annual town meeting. What's important that maybe if you will just go to the town meeting, as well as the town elections in May. And then once the money is approved, Lynn can then go out and contact the various vendors to acquire what's needed, as well as working with the, um, maintenance department for some of the preliminary work they have to do. Also, at the end of the month, the Friends of the Southwood Public Library is gonna have a book sale for the first time in it's, uh, pre-COVID. So they'll have the traditional Wednesday night for members only, and then Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from ten to one book sale, and then cleanup uh, will be on the following Monday. So that's all I've got. And thank you again for being on the Board of Trustees. So that's all I've got, and thank you again for being on the Board of Trustees and trying to serve the community.
Um, so I think that was it. The next meeting, the second Tuesday of May, will be the uh, the fourteenth. Fourteenth.
Does that run into town elections? I don't remember when the town elections are and yeah, you'll probably
See if they have anything on the website yet. Oh, May, the May fourteenth. There, there's, there's nothing on May just yet.
Oh, collection.
Can't spell anything right. I know, you, you, you get used to like a certain keyboard and then it's like um that's for twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-four, town election and voting information. Uh, it says sample town ballot May fourteenth, so I'm assuming that's when it's gonna be.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah, then we're not really interested.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
Vote prior to seven P M.
Yeah, the election is, the election is the fourteenth.
I know, uh, Michelle used to not like us meeting on, yeah. Well, on, um, on election, on town election day. Do we want
Let myself move on.
We wanna, um, I, I can check in with the new, with Jessica Menzoni, and then, um or we can, I guess we can decide if we want, well, the next, the next one, the twenty-first, that is the town meeting, right?
Yeah, I didn't know what the date was.
The twenty-first is the
Yeah, see, polling polling hours are May fourteenth, seven A M to eight P M. And then the town meeting is May twenty-first.
And people are voting by mail or people are coming in the wigsy pool of votes. Yeah, so let, let's just go with
Yeah, let me, let me just check with, um, I'll just send a quick, I'll just send a quick phone call over to the town clerk's office just to make sure that that's okay. Um, and then
I thought they didn't want us to have meetings like up against the elections.
Yeah, I feel like that's, that's kind of been the sentiment, so maybe it's best to just, I mean, we could do well, there, there's early and in-person voting dates on Tuesday, May seventh, but it's only ten to four. Um, we could potentially do another, um another session in May. Cause at the twenty-eighth, then you get into like Memorial Day. Um. And then, I mean, we, we could potentially do the seventh, um. Or
Which, whichever you prefer.
I mean, I don't, I don't have a preference. Let me just go check in our calendar real quick that we don't have anything going.
Yeah, May is always the challenge.
So I could see if they'd be willing to just move out to a table.
We can actually meet at a, at the area.
We could.
If there's only five or six of them.
We could. Then we'd have to change the, the official posting on the agenda and whatnot. Why don't I check, I'll just check and see if the book club is willing to move. I'm sure they are, and if not, then I'll figure it out. May seventh. Okay. So we'll, we'll plan on May seventh, um regular, same time as always. Um. Let's go with that. All right. Then I think
All goes in favor of Michael, yes?
Cindy, yes.
That was, that was a yes from Tracy, but she was on mute.
Oh, Tracy, yeah, sorry.
Alright, so we are good until May seventh at seven P M. Um, have a great night, everybody.
Okay.
Bye. Take care, everybody.